Excellent. All right. It is now 4:31 and I will call the special meeting of the Budget and Audit Committee to order. And let's see here. Sorry, I did not bring my printout. So first thing is roll call. I think upon visual inspection, you can see that we are both here.
Yes, I can confirm that. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. All right. Then next is public comment on non agenda items. If there's anyone that would like to make public comment, now's a good time.
Mayor, one, I do not have any speaker cards and I do not have any hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, then I will close public comment and we will move straight into action items. And the first item is the quarterly financial reports on the city's investment portfolio. I believe Brett, you are going to kick us off.
Yeah, I mean, this is a pretty standard report for your guys' review. As we've kind of talked about internally, with me starting as the new city manager and hiring a new finance director coming up here, we will continue to look at kind of transitioning our investments to benefit from a slightly longer duration, which will help us kind of maintain the current interest rate level through what will most likely be some reduction from the Fed in the next 24 months of interest rates within the environment. Right now, as we look at where it stands today, you know, Camp and Leif, which were essentially money market funds, are well over 4% on their own. That, you know, is not going to maintain forever, but in the short run, especially over the next, you know, quarter or so, we're pretty confident it will. So the timing, the reason I bring that up is it's important for me to sit down actually with UBS and have a conversation about how we do it, get the new finance director in, and then create a process and strategy about how we remew and monitor this with them moving forward to be ensuring we are actively managing it to the best that a government should relative to stately liquidity and yield, which are kind of the three pillars that municipalities look for their investment management. You know, we aren't there yet. I think we're moving in a better direction with moving investments to getting more yield. We're still sub two typically in an interest rate environment that I see today. Two and a half to 3% is probably a good bogey to try to get to, at least in the short run. And then we'll kind of, you know, continue to try to do that. And so the report just kind of gives you a analysis kind of where we were, but not where we're going. And so I wanted to bring up where we're going because I think that's a better representation of kind of what the future will look like. Happy to answer any questions.
I just have two. And one is really a comment. And we did speak earlier today. It looks like our progress on some of the money that we reinvested earlier this year into higher yield is doing well, better than it was. And the second part of my question is, are you UBS agent is not here or representative is not here today, but we will have that person at a future meeting?
Yeah, so what my objective is, is to, in the next month or so, to meet with them and then set up a full council briefing where they could just go over, you know, who UBS is to the city, what they do, what their strategy and relationship will be with us moving forward. So everybody is on the same page as we kind of continue through the current environment. The other thing we're going to be a little bit more mindful of as we look at investments that typically hasn't happened as much in the past is when we look at corporate debt, we're going to be a little more sensitive to the banking sector. Typically, you know, the government code requires certain ratings of investments anyways, but when we look at a bank like First Republic or something like that, that is generally seen as a well-run bank up until very recently, those are kind of things we want to just maybe stay much more in the money center corporate debt if we do go into the banking world. So those are the things we'll talk with UBS about and just ensure that as we get a little bit further out on appropriately out on the risk curve relative to the government code, that we are still being mindful of some of the kind of potholes that might exist in the current economic environment.
So is our expectation that we would get a UBS rep to do a presentation or at least come and speak on a regular cadence?
I think I can leave that to council's pleasure after the first conversation. If council's desire is to have, I think, a conversation with them directly more than once a year, we can arrange that. I think if council feels like generally having the annual update and then, I think, understanding through our quarterly reports a little bit more, you know, detail of where we're going and what we're doing and why, we could go in that direction as well. I would leave it kind of to council's pleasure after the first meeting of the frequency at which you'd want to have that conversation with the rep directly.
Okay. I'm not sure how you feel. I would recommend at least once a year would be sufficient.
That's typically what I'm used to as well. Yeah.
All right, and that's fine. If we can do that, that'd be great. There's a note in the report that indicates that the portfolio now includes medium-term notes, in parentheses, corporate bonds. Can you elaborate on what those are? I wasn't sure that we had those prior.
Yeah, so typically that's where we see corporate debt. And that would be, you know, could be any of the larger companies that you see relative to an Apple and IBM, all the way down to bank-level debt. And when I say bank-level debt, when we talk about banking sector, there's two ways to look at it. Either you're going to buy into debt of the holding company, which is kind of the larger umbrella, or you can buy bank-level debt, which is specific to the subsidiary company. Same company, there's just a little bit greater risk and sometimes a greater percentage. Both are allowed under the government code. We have started to move into corporate bonds and corporate debt. We will continue to look to maximize that relative to our cash flow and relative to kind of our outer limit that you've put in your investment policy, for the ZM percentage of the reserve that we can put in there that we are investing. That will be part of the UBS conversation. What's the benefit of essentially going further out on the risk curve and further out on the duration curve relative to shorter-term notes that may offer very similar interest rates right now? It's a very unique interest rate environment. Typically, you don't have, you know, two-year notes outpacing 10-year notes. Not a good sign if you think that's a recession indicator, but it also will play into how we're looking at locking in rates for a reasonable amount of time moving forward. The other caution I want to provide is it's important for us to do our best to maximize our investment return, but we shouldn't be looking at it as a budget balancing tool, right? It essentially, many agencies, the largest we all know is Orange County, but many agencies have gotten in trouble, not to that level, but still not done well when they are essentially playing hedge fund manager with, you know, their investments, trying to maximize their revenue and their operating budget. It definitely should be improved on, but it shouldn't be the thing that we look to in the future to help balance any budgets.
What category, I'm sorry, what category of, I guess I'm just curious, because what category of authorized investments do the corporate bonds fall under?
I'd have to look at, Nataish, do you have that? Yeah, go ahead.
If you look at page 15 of 102, you'll see the medium, the bond holdings that we have at the moment. And you'll see Citibank and there's a number of, you know, the ones that we are holding at the moment. So I believe that's the one that we are looking into.
Mayor, are you asking the level of risk that we would classify with corporate debt or specific?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Like, where does it fall?
In the kind of corporate debt allowed by our government code?
Not with the investment policy.
Oh, I would say it's probably medium risk is what I would classify it at. They're well-capitalized companies. These are not, you know, fly-by-night corporate debt. The government code doesn't even allow us to really go down to that type of level because of the rating they have to have from Moody's and S&amp;P's for us to be able to invest in them. So it's really a very strong medium-level risk. You know, I think it can't fall to low because that's really a treasury level in our classification, but truthfully, the corporate debt we're investing in is rather secure and you would need to see probably '08 or if not worse crisis for the type of corporate debt that we have really be impacted in a meaningful way.
Okay. And I guess I ask, I'm sorry, because I had thought, I could be mistaken, that we had eliminated certain types of authorized investments. So that's why I'm curious, where do those fall under?
Are you, I would have to look back at your investment, our investment policy a little bit closer, but typically when I see that happen in agencies, it's more towards mortgage-backed securities or things of that nature than it is corporate debt itself. It's usually some kind of quasi-derivative instrument.
No, no, yeah, I get that. I think we used to have it, but I would, if you could refer to, we could, you could look at offline, but the May 2nd, 2023 meeting is where the updated investment policy was approved. And that delineates what would be, you know, all the authorized investments. If you could take a look. Because that's why corporate bonds stood out to me, because I think that we actually said that we're going to move away from that. But take a look and we can check back next.
I'll take a look. I may want to come back with that policy with my experience in doing this and as the Assistant Treasurer Tax Collector many years ago with Napa County. I think corporate debt may not have the risk curve that, you know, we think it will. So, but I'll look and circle back.
Okay, thanks. And then as far as the Leif and Camp, we, I think we indicate that we had, was it 15% or so, right? I'm going off memory. Do we have a target for what percent we're going for? Or is it more of a dollar target?
It's more of a dollar target. Remember, we are going through that analysis.
Yeah, for cash flow. What is the dollar target?
It depends on a number of factors. For example, the cash flow in.
No, I understand all the concepts, but like, have we established a dollar target?
Not yet, but we did move about $500,000 from Leif to investments. That was something that we did short-term just to get the, but that is definitely one of the tasks that we are working with the finance director with. And I think that is something that will definitely work with the city manager.
So then in terms of a target, do we have a target for when we'll get the target?
I mean, ideally, best case, it would be good to have your finance director actually here to permanently do it.
I will give a lot of allowances on this. I just want to make sure that we have that top of mind.
But yes, it's definitely when we talk with them about the portfolio, I mean, it's something we'll be looking at. A little bit of it will depend also too on really understanding our dry periods between April and December when property tax comes in. And so doing a little bit more analysis on what that might be, also talking with your public works engineer about capital project funding, which uses usually reserves, and the timing of that will dictate the duration as well. And so, once we get all of that figured out, you know, I would say it's probably a late fall reality at this point with hiring the finance director and getting everything in there, but it's on the list of conversations. Yep.
Okay. And then my last question on this item, did we incorporate the impact of the maturing and then reinvesting of our securities into the budget that's in the next item?
Yes, we did. That's one of the analysis we did. You'll see the interest income going up and we have securities that are maturing. And then we're actually going with a shorter duration and some of the things as a city manager mentioned about, you know, some of the other like liquid cash side of earning more than like, you know, 4% or so. We're definitely looking at that. You'll see in the report that we, the average E is reduced from 2.32 to 2.01, and that was, that was part of the analysis that we're working on.
Okay. Was that called out? I guess we can get to it at the next item. So that's fine. Okay. That was all the questions I had on this one. Did you have any?
Nope, that was everyone.
Okay. Cool. We should take public comment. Let's do that.
Mayor, one, I do not have any speaker cards and I do not have any hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, then I will close public comment. And I think there is no action item here. So thank you for the presentation and we can move to the next item. All right. So the next item is receive the report and provide direction on the FY24 proposed ops and maintenance budget. I believe Mr. Sharma, you are kicking us off.
I will turn it over to our city manager to kick it off and then I'll go from there.
Thank you.
We're to get just a short PowerPoint up and then we'll, ready? Okay. So, you know, I think it's important to, you know, thank staff that was involved in this process as we kind of work towards the finish line. As both of you are aware, you know, the vacancy of a finance director now has made this a little bit of an interesting kind of couple of weeks till we get to the end here. But Nataish has been wonderful partner in kind of taking the lead once that happened and helping us get to the finish line. You know, as we talk through today, I think there's a couple of things and a couple of points to be aware of. The first is, you know, the general fund is the major operating fund of the city. You know, I think when we look at the general fund, and that's where I'm going to focus kind of my comments and then turn it over to Nataish to talk about the other funds. Related to the general fund, you know, that fund continues to, I think, go through iterations of, you know, what is kind of our fundamental level of service delivery right now and what does that cost? At this point in time, the budget that's proposed to you today is essentially balanced with the use of one-time pension reserves to help offset our pension costs, to be able to balance the budget. What that means is our budget's pretty close to finally balanced. We needed a little help from this one-time money, but we're not too far off. That's a good thing in the short run. As we look a little bit more out into the future, I think that's where we run into a little bit of trouble because we know operating expenses in general, whether it's the staff that delivers the service to the community or if it's the contractors we use or the materials we use, all of that is going to go up in the future and probably far outpace, at this point, the speed of our revenue growth in a community like ours and many similar that are kind of locked in our property tax levels with small growth, locked in our sales tax level with small growth, locked in our franchise fee growth. And so we have to look for other levers at some point and have conversations around potentially pulling those. I think as we go through, you're going to see that I'll request some time and looking to not do many more additional cuts to try to balance the budget further and use less of the pension reserve just to provide, me as a new city manager for you, time to understand the intended or unintended consequences of additional cuts that might need to happen. I think right now, some I can provide you, but the context of what an additional cut in certain areas may mean, I would really need to have the time to really understand that before I'd feel comfortable with just moving pretty significantly in any one direction or the other, just to make sure we don't do anything that we otherwise would have not done if we would have just had a little bit more time and information. As we go through this year with the budget, you know, we will continue to look for operating efficiencies. We will continue to enhance or even implement technology in many areas, especially related to the public, that will help us not necessarily maybe reduce costs, but definitely cost avoidance in the future with what it would otherwise look like if we didn't have those technologies. Next slide. So the major cost of any municipal agency is staff. Staff deliver the primary level of service to the community. Staff costs generally in this city are, you know, reasonable. I will say we continue to talk and your council has had conversations before that, you know, your salary structure is one of the lowest, if not the lowest in Contra Costa County. It's something we continue to need to look at moving forward. You know, as we kind of walk through, you'll see, and we get into detail or answer some questions, that, you know, the pension costs are going up as they are in pretty much every agency. I will say here, you know, not significant relative to our partners. You know, I think CalPERS in general has had and continues to have negative returns. I don't think that is something that's going to change very much in the near term. I think you're going to continue to see some difficulty with CalPERS meeting their discount rates. That'll continue to impact our budgets. But that's something that we know and will continue to plan for. There is some mitigation we can do, but it's rather limited with our current positions, income positions. As we look at operating services and supplies, you know, we continue to try to manage and hold those as best we can, although, as you can imagine with inflation, not only are the materials going up, but the cost of service delivery continues to rise. And some of that we can manage in how we look at contracts, how we bid contracts, and we'll look at that efficiency as we move forward throughout the year. But some of it is just the cost of doing business is increasing. And no matter what, if we want to maintain the level of service that we currently have in the community, that unfortunately is going to increase the cost of the city's budget. As I talked about earlier, we're going to use a little bit of the pension reserve, but in general, the city has sufficient reserves. I mean, if you look at our general fund, fund balance and you add our pandemic relief fund balance, we're about 120% reserved, which is, I'm not going to say unheard of in government in California, but it's definitely, most agencies will try for 20 to 30% in fiscal contingency and then have other reserves for capital and things like that. And so I'd say there's opportunity there to look at how we position reserves in the future. And that's a conversation we can have later in the fall. I don't need to have it now, but it's something we definitely need to flag and talk about as we kind of move forward through the start and future of this fiscal year coming up. Next slide, please. So as we look at our operating revenue and transfers into the general fund, it's about 5.695 million is what's being presented to you today. That's counter with operating appropriations and transfers out of 5.724 million. So essentially, as is, we would show a net deficit of $28,000 before we look at supplemental budget changes. As you saw in your staff report, once we make those supplemental budget changes, we basically, or have a balanced budget. Now, I think it's important though to mention to the community that's listening, balanced budget just means resources total and expenses match. It doesn't mean our operating revenues and expenses match. And I say that because as I mentioned earlier, we're recommending the use of about $125,000 in our pension reserve to be able to balance the budget. So if we didn't use reserves, we would otherwise have a little bit of a shortfall that we still need to deal with. Again, it's not a Grand Canyon-level deficit that we need to look at, but it does show that our kind of operating expenses and revenues just are not aligned as we move forward and something we need to talk about as a council and in a community in the future. Next slide, please. So when we look at revenues, you know, I've talked about a community that's pretty built out like this, that has a small commercial base. The levers to pull are not significant. So property tax continues to grow at, you know, 4% to 5% a year. Sales tax continues to grow, you know, around 2% a year. You know, as we look at permits and fees, we see a little bit of jump in that relative to the new fee schedule that'll be coming out and dependent upon other discussions that we have down the line with what events may or may not be held here. You know, that could increase that number maybe slightly more even. And then, as we talked about earlier, you know, your interest apportionment is going up approximately $47,000, which is, you know, roughly taking into consideration some of the moves that we're going to make relative to our investment portfolio. All beneficial, all wonderful that we are seeing better use of our reserves as far as interest, that we are making sure we have a modern fee schedule. So on the fringes, all of these help the budget. It doesn't, I think, structurally change what we need to keep service at the level of the community currently desires. And I think that's where the efficiency actions, the increased revenue actions are all great, but it is not, I think, the foolproof way of what we're going to do to sustain this moving forward. Next slide, please. So as we look at appropriations and transfers, we talked about this a little bit, and we have salary and benefits that are majority, you know, 70 to 75% of the general fund. We talked about services and supplies. Specifically to my office, what's in your budget today is a $40,000 increase in other professional services. For me, to have some runway to deal with technology projects that will be looming in the next 12 months, those can begin with potentially facility rental softwares. It'll move to permit software potentially. There's some agenda management software we need to look at. All of these need to be considered. 40 grand is probably not enough, but it gets me moving in the direction to then come back to council when we've kind of ironed out the plan and the timing of which we're going to do each of these technology projects. Next slide, please. So as part of and what's currently in your budget, and June 6th, the full council will be getting this item. With the finance director vacancy, it's important for us to really look at those salaries that we talked about and start making a little bit of headway. And so what we're recommending to do is actually changing the salary for finance director, the community development director, the police chief, and the assistant city manager, part of which is to create the same kind of salary banding and structure that's currently existed and to slightly improve our ability to kind of retain and recruit those key, some of those key positions throughout the city. They're in the proposed budget. The total cost and benefits was approximately $50,000 for all of these changes. I think it's vital for us to be somewhat able to recruit talent in these roles and retain talent. It is, you know, not definitely the foolproof solving of the problem, but it moves us in a positive direction. And I think something we, at least in the short run, can sustain while we evaluate what staffing models and structures are kind of needed long-term to help sustain the service delivery for the city to the community as time moves forward. Next slide, please. You know, as I talked about, I would love a little bit more time to just dig in, look at contract services and how we use contractors throughout our city departments, look at efficiencies with technology. The other key item and something that's truly not currently in the budget is you are still in negotiations with your unrepresented employee groups. That cost is clearly obviously not in the budget because we don't know what that agreed-upon cost will be yet. We are hopeful that we will finalize those negotiations soon. As you will see, and let's go to the next slide. That coupled with other issues like generally having a broader conversation about the organizational assessment that was done, talking with our public works engineer about the capital needs and what that plan looks like. Climatech will take care of a lot of that if we can move forward with that project, and so I'm hopeful. But there still will be other facility needs that need to be addressed and planned out to try to see if we have the capital available over time. We need to look, as I said, of a reserve fund policy and creating some kind of structure around the money and not just have this one giant bucket, but put policy around it. Need to look at our purchasing policy and refine that, make it much more clear, ensuring it meets all of the current regulations that we need to have throughout, you know, government code that we're benefiting from cooperative agreements throughout the state and other counties as most beneficial as we can. We need to look at, again, technology improvements. You know, I don't think it's a shock that technology is light in this city internally and public-facing, and so seeing value add that we can add there, I think, continues to be areas that are somewhat built in your budget, but not fully. And so we may need to come back for further conversation about that. So relative to the general fund, what's our recommendation today? Well, it is essentially to approve the budget as is. And the city manager, as I talked to you before, I am asking you for a little bit more time to make any additional cuts to really just let me dig into the operations further to understand and understand where those changes might be able to make and where they really probably can't. And then, in order to balance the budget today, we're asking to use $125,000 from the pension commitment, our pension reserve, which is appropriate and common use for those cities that have pension reserves to try to be able to offset some pension costs with that funding. And then the recommendation is if we get the MOU done sooner than later and have to come back to your council to pay for that, that we, there's a rainy day fund that has $68,000 roughly in it right now. I don't think that's beneficial fund to have relative to your other reserves, and I think it's just a bucket of money and has no purpose. I would say we give it a purpose and use it to balance, assuming the cost is within that range, the potential MOU agreement that hopefully comes sooner than later with your unrepresented group. And so with that, I'm happy to answer at least initially any general fund questions, and then I'll turn it over to Nataish for all your other funds.
Did we have an update on the results for FY23? Last we looked, I think we projected a surplus in '23, about 350. I don't know if we have any better, a more refined estimate at this time.
Go ahead, Nataish.
Yes, we did. And I believe there's a report in here that we actually looked at the difference. It was, let me see if I can find it. We did update that and it was more like $400,000, some thousand dollars. It's actually probably in this.
Can you identify where in the agenda pack that is?
Sure.
I must have missed it.
Is there a specific question on that reserve, Mayor, or just general comment?
No, just general, just to get us kind of like level set on where we're at.
Page 57 of 102, you'll see 22, 23 revised adopted projections, and you'll see the surplus is 408,931.
I see. Perfect. Okay. So, yeah, and I, you know, in considering what actions we take, you know, a large part of this I know is due to vacancies throughout the year. And as we, you know, it kind of matches up as we are recruiting for those same vacancies, that that is available, that we make that available to offset some of those increases that we talk about. The other thing that I had a question on was the, I just want to get a clear understanding of what is in and what is out. So for the 40,000 that you referenced regarding certain software, that's incorporate here. Does that, is that, would you characterize that as one-time cost? Or is there ongoing cost for that? Because that seems to take the same character as the item. Because that seems to take the same character as the items that we discussed at a prior meeting with ARPA funds when we did some one-time purchases for maintenance equipment and security. Does it, was it fall in that same category? Because I know that there was, those software items were presented as within that umbrella.
So I would say part of it yes and part of it no. What I mean by that is I think there were some related to the agenda management software that we would come back and look at. The question I need to go over with the executive team is what's the real order operation we want to take? Well, A, let's identify what we want to tackle in the next 12 to 18 months technology-wise, and B, truly what's the order operation of those projects then? Depending upon what the project is and essentially what it entails, it may just be a pure subscription plague where an agenda management software is really, the implementation is not that significant, it's more of a subscription cost moving forward. Whereas something like a facility management or facility rental software might require some one-time implementation costs, and then we'll have a much smaller licensing fee, for lack of a better term, that we would do. And so my hope is that the $40,000, to the best of my ability, will cover all of the one-time costs and at least the first year of the subscription costs, and then we would circle back with council in the next budget development and say, okay, we've done X, Y, and Z, it improves efficiency this way, and the service cost to move forward with that is, you know, 2,000, 5,000 a year, whatever it may be for that specific software.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I guess the way that I would characterize that then, for those items that are more one-time in nature that fit within the same category, I don't know if it would belong in our operating budget, and I would pull that out. I mean, it's still something that we need to do, but, I mean, when we're talking about the presentation, and here's the operating results or the operating budget, and then here are the items that we're going to do on top of that, you know, in addition that are one-time in nature, so that it more clearly delineates between our regular ops and those one-time things. I think that would be a more clear presentation, if possible.
Yeah, we can look at, no, no, we can look at that. I think depending on how the fund structure is here, and I got to dig in a little bit deeper, many times you move money from those specific reserves into the general fund more broadly, and so we can sit down with Nataish and the new finance director and figure out either way to classify them so they're easily pulled out in what you would kind of see in how you remove things sometimes from GAAP earnings when you're a public company, right? And they're not related. It'd be a similar concept to get it apples to apples, or we can talk about if the fund itself should actually just house the expenses. I need to sit down with Nataish and see what's best for the structure that we have in Clayton. Every city is a little bit different in how that looks, so, but I get your point is let's not have one-time money cloud our operating costs, so it essentially afflates the reality people are looking at.
Exactly.
I just want to interject one thing here, ask a question, just going back to that surplus from this current year. So where does that money go then, that surplus? Is that being applied to the next budget cycle?
So depending on the city, you can do it a variety of ways. Part of my desire with Clayton is that we tackle a fund balance policy, which in a normal environment, I'll call it where we already have that built in, when you end a fiscal year, essentially when you close the books, which happens really later in the fall, when your audit's close to done, two things happen. Either just rolls into your general fund reserves, which is the default mechanism, and/or you, council can give direction to say, instead of that, we want to use it to balance the next year's budget, which is very legally allowed. Part of what we'll talk about in the fund balance policy is, you know, what strategies do we want to generally implement? In the city I just came from, I created a fund balance policy where, in essence, when we ended the fiscal year, in this case with $400,000, 10% went into trying to operate, balance the budget, 75% went into capital reserves, 10% went into pension reserves. Now, that was the priority of that council. Your council can do whatever you like, but that's the type of conversation I want to have. So essentially, when we end the year, it's already predetermined by policy of council and is automated to go to those various buckets. It provides some context and policy direction around the money. Otherwise, it really just loops back into the general fund reserve and becomes this big bucket again of, which is great because we have reserves, but we have no policy around them, and so it just ends up being a number that keeps growing. But you are more than ample at this point in time to say, we'd like to use as much as possible to balance the budget, or, you know, just let it go until that policy is formalized.
And then, I have a follow-up question on the pension reserves using $125,000 from that to balance pension costs. So that's kind of, I think that fund has 288,000. That is a one-time fix, right? That is not a long-term solution.
Yeah, so it essentially is allowing time for me to then take a really good 12-month review of this, or we'll call it 10, until the next budget cycle really gets going, and say, okay, and looking at this, this is really kind of the floor, this is where we looked at contracts, here's where we're at. And it allows us to not just cut to balance and not, again, know what those unintended consequences might mean. But yes, for sure, that is not sustainable, I think, well, we have enough reserves, it's council's pleasure, we could probably do that for a while, but I don't think that's the best course of action. I think at some point, we need to understand and right-size the ship to the community to know what, over a decade, say, is really reasonable for the service delivery. And so, council member, you're spot-on that it's a short-term kind of fix to try to continue to have conversations around the budget and efficiency moving forward.
And kind of the same, just a follow-up, sorry, the rainy day fund. So if that were to cover the cost of the MOU for the miscellaneous employees, again, that would get us through this year, but then we got to dig a little deeper.
You got it. Yeah, and it becomes a conversation where I think, you know, as we get permanency in a lot of the roles around, you know, my team, what is the reasonable level? How do we maintain and retain staff with salaries? What is the service delivery level that council and the community wants? As we have those conversations in the coming months and maybe even years to come, we start to ferret out what our true operating cost should be. And then that dictates either need more revenue or we don't, or, you know, those conversations kind of happen on their own naturally as we kind of ferret out that reality.
Thank you.
I have lots of random questions, but one of the more significant items was the supplemental property tax and real property transfer tax. We are, I think in FY '24, we are budgeting an amount significantly lower than what was realized within FY '22. I know '23 is not completed, so I go back to '22. What were, I mean, a lot of this is driven by units sold, anything over the 2%, right? So what were the number of units sold as a driver for this estimate? Because it does seem substantially lower. I think we're looking at 10K in the budget for FY '24 versus a 50K actual for '22 just for the supplemental?
Yeah, I'll turn that over to Nataish. I will say, broadly speaking, HDL is our contractor who kind of gives us this information, and I think what you're seeing is a little bit of the industry generally, pardon me, being cautious that we're going to see a little bit of slowdown because of the interest rates and the amount of housing stock that moves in a community like this, you know. Probably the law of large numbers starts to play a little bit into the timing, you know. I don't think, again, I don't think it's an O8 downward trend, but it may plateau. And so if you have less, you know, hands moving back and forth, you're going to have less benefit to those areas, is the general sense that I've gotten, whether it's here or in the communities I just left. But Nataish may have a little bit more detail on the why.
Absolutely. Thank you. City manager, so this doesn't really, is not based on number of units, but more on, based on the value of the home that is being sold and the value of the home that was before the value that was assessed at the county level. As you remember that we have Proposition 13.
No, yeah, I get that part. I know exactly how the calculation works.
So the sale price and then what it was at the county, it recorded the county is what we create supplemental. So I will say that this is, again, as city manager said, that 50,000 was, '22 was probably the year that we, when we were looking at this with our consultants, that's the year a lot of movement happened, and we don't see the same kind of movement as HDL was projecting for '23, '24 due to interest rates and other things. So this number is very hard to, let me just say, this is very hard to say that what is it going to be. A number of cities don't even budget for this, to be honest with you.
But, okay, so my understanding is that the supplemental is on a lag. What we'll get in supplemental in any given year will be based on sales over a certain time period, and there's a lookback, and we actually, we should know the exact number if we wanted to on the sale versus current versus.
I never had a county.
Yeah, we don't need to look at it that, in that level detail, but I think at least as an indicator or as like a driver is the number of sales. Now, obviously, it is the difference between the sale price and the original tax basis, but at some point, you know, and the reason I call this out is because we are estimating $10,000 current year versus $50,000 prior year. I mean, that's an 80% reduction, and I do think that there was probably impact to sales versus, as a result of interest rates, but I think 80% just seems steep. So that's why I question the basis.
Yeah, 80%, yes. Absolute $40,000? Maybe not, right? And I think it's important to distinguish the percentage from the absolute basis here because, you know, I will tell you, this number in every jurisdiction from the county of Napa, the city of Benicia, it has fluctuated, and colleagues I've talked to, I don't think anyone has ever had this dialed in. I think here, you know, unless you're going to get a community that has been here a while, I'll say, start selling their homes at a really high rate, I don't think you're going to see significant supplemental growth and less likely to happen, as HDL, I think, is trying to articulate, with interest rates at 6% and 7%. And so I think, I think you probably may have some play, Mayor, a little bit. I mean, we may be able to move from 10 to 25 if we want to have a little bit more risk on the curve of what that would be. You know, I'm not opposed to that conversation with you and council member, but I think that going much higher than that, I think you're, we're just hoping, when I think the reality is I don't necessarily believe it's going to come in that high relative to what I've seen in other communities as well.
Yeah, I wouldn't suggest a specific number. I guess my question is mostly around what was the basis for that number itself.
So, again, this is one of those.
Is it directly from HDL?
This is an estimate from HDL, as I understand, from the previous finance director.
Okay.
And if you remember, if you look at '23, we have, looks like we collected in the first distribution, 8,269, 8,269. So I believe that also plays into what the projection is for next year. And one of the things I will have to say that when property tax, when properties are sold, the counties don't just make adjustments right away to your tax bill. Usually those are behind, and they usually run into different fiscal years as well.
Yeah, there's a lag for sure. I mean, it's a, there's a set window, right? It's like, if you sell within this window, your supplemental will come in this window, and cities and everyone will receive in the next window. But that's not a mystery, that's a known, those are known timelines, right?
Yeah, but the auditor or controller's offices don't just have that readily available. They really are waiting till they start to do their tax rolls to push that out. And so, coming from a county at one point in my career, it's not as easily attainable as you may think. Their systems are not like, the property tax systems are archaic in the state of California, and so it does take a lag to get that. And so I would say HDL usually has the best pulse, in my experience. That said, it's something where I think, you know, if we ever want to be, again, slightly further out on this, I think there's a way. I think we can do that. I think HDL is really trying to be, in my past experience, even though I wasn't on the call for this specific instance, my past experience is they want to be in this type of environment at the, we'll call it, end of a cycle, a housing cycle. They tend to be a little more conservative to help jurisdictions not kind of get over their skis, essentially.
Yeah, no, that's fine, and I get it. I think, you know, we're somewhat, the characteristic here is a little different because we can pretty much count how many, like, we can go out and count how many units sold, and we know what they are, like, if there's a list, it's, yeah. And so it's not like a large city where you just, you really are waiting for the estimate. Like, we can actually get it down to the unit if we really wanted to. I'm not suggesting that we do that.
No, I get it. The hard part is that the way property tax swaps happens so much with even supplemental is that's where it gets, I may be able to tell you that we have a delta of, you know, $50 million in supplemental sales, but how that swaps through AB8 and all the other fund property tax is where we need the auditor controller to help us really say, okay, what is the net dollar coming back to the city of Clayton relative to that? And that's where it's, you know, it gets a little bit harder. I can talk with Concha Costa County auditor controller at some point, I have to meet them anyways, and I can talk through just what would be a reasonableness factor for them in helping us in the future.
Okay, that'd be great. And the other comment I would have is on the supplement, or not supplement, sorry, on the supporting schedules in the agenda packet, it seems inconsistent for what's presented in the packet on the detailed schedules versus what's in the staff report, because it talks about things that are in or out. Can you kind of like give some context so that it helps clarify what is being presented?
Yeah, I'll let Nataish go into maybe some detail on that. I will tell you, part of that is a couple of things. One, from my observation, obviously, the finance director leaving two weeks ago does not help us get into this where it's consistent, that's one problem. Two, I think in the future, I'd like to see us use the technology that was purchased to actually do the budget in instead of spreadsheets, which I think, in my experience, creates a lot of issues with inconsistency versus report versus the sheets themselves. And so that's some process and kind of operational improvements that I'll be making with the new finance director to kind of ensure we're a little bit more institutionalized in how we do this. Not an excuse by any means for them not matching up, but it's just more of a reality of, I think all of this has kind of come together to provide a little bit of inconsistency relative to the report versus the sheets. But I'll let Nataish talk about details.
The item that's included, a different version was included in the earlier version, so that's why you'll see the inconsistencies that are between the detailed spreadsheet compared to the staff report itself. I believe that, for example, LMD.
What's the most current?
We actually sent it out, and I believe that we printed it out today, too.
Yeah, you should have a supplemental budget, supplemental budget, supplemental agenda item come out, I'm going to say around 2:00, but don't quote me on the time, when that was identified that there was an error in the, which sheets were posted. As I said in my email to both of you, I think there's some inconsistencies. I don't think it's material from a decision-making point for either of you, but it definitely, as Nataish mentioned, on the LMD, I think there's a couple other small funds where it's now clear the improved numbers that need to be in there, and I'll continue to work with Nataish to refine that as we come to June 6th conversation. But that was sent out today, I want to say this afternoon it was posted.
Okay. And then I guess I'll, one more question, then I'll take a break, and then you can go. On the staff report, there is, I should bring my glasses next time, for the ARPA summary, it says we had authorized $135,000 for a one-year term of a full-time senior accountant. Now, I know we didn't fill that position, but we did have our illustrious finance director for a little bit of time. What amount of the 135 was, does this represent actual spend or authorized spend?
It wasn't spent, as you remember, that most of my costs came from the vacant position.
Exactly.
So it wasn't spent, that's why you'll see that it was allocated, but it wasn't spent.
So in terms of ending balance in this fund, what is, does it, is it current to say that this 135 should not be here and that the actual fund balance for this should be higher? Because if it wasn't spent, then I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out where that actually went.
So, yes, but I'll caution again, I think anytime we look at fund balance as part of the conversation, you really want to close the books in this fiscal year, so I think, from my observation, yes, I think you could say, you're not going to, we're not going to hire that senior accountant right now, it's probably $135,000 higher, but we want to close the books relative to all the costs that might have gone through that fund before we, I think, firmly give you a number moving forward. But for sake of conversation, you could add the 135 today and do that, yeah.
Okay, because I think that was actually FY '22 when we did that. So I was unsure how that rolled in, and I know that we continued that because we needed the resources, and so it's fine to utilize. I just wasn't, it's not clear what the net result is to that fund because the position wasn't filled, and it doesn't indicate that here, so.
And Mr. Mayor, if you also noted that there's other budget that was, you know, for software services to digitize.
Yeah, it was allocated, but it wasn't spent, right?
Exactly. So you'll see that, that some of the, like, the position costs definitely will add to the net balance, but some of these other costs may happen, you know, next year or so, but those were the council actions that were taking place.
Okay, because, and I'm sorry to belabor, but when I look at the report, at the bottom, it says net balance as of April 24, 2023, so that's as of like a month ago, but it indicates that that was already spent, but I know that it wasn't.
Yeah. A number of these things were not spent as.
Okay, so, so that's not, I think there needs to be a little bit more clarity around the presentation so that we are. Okay, so, so that's not, I think there needs to be a little bit more clarity around the presentation so that we are indicate that this is maybe encumbered. Or this was, you know, designated, something like that, but not actually spent.
We can break this up into for June 6th to show what was actually spent and what was remaining.
Okay, yeah, that would be helpful. Okay, I will pause and, and let my, let my colleague here take over.
Take a breather and then we'll come back to you. So just a couple of other things that I just wanted to point out for the, also for the benefit of our, um, audience. If anyone is listening today. We are, um, we did not include the repayment of the Climat Tech loan in here. Because we don't know the terms of that loan yet. Uh, nor did we include the potential benefits of that Climat Tech.
That's correct. So, you know, we are hopeful July, August, one of those months CEC will approve the loan. At that point, we'll have a better understanding of the term and the start date of construction with Climat Tech. When I talked to Climat Tech last, it's a 12 to 18 month total construction. So if we assume, you know, late fall, the winter, you know, they get started, the loan maybe kicks in at that point. But we don't know that for sure yet. And we also have a city, uh, contribution which may actually start at first and then the loan kicks in. So there are a lot of variables. So yeah, I would say that 24, 25 is really going to be more of the representative year of the debt service. Minus all the benefits that we're going to see in solar, PG&E, water and, and the like from the project itself. Um, and that's the year we're really going to want to tie into the, the net value of doing the project of that nature. Yep.
Great, mm-hmm. And, um, the same with, uh, we've been in, uh, deep discussions with the folks from PG&E, which has been terrific. And so again, just for the benefit of the public, we're doing, um, they are doing a deep dive with us. On what, um, streetlights that they own have been transferred to LED? And are we getting, uh, have we received rebates? Are we getting, uh, the lower LED rates? Same with our own lighting. And they of course are working very closely with Climat Tech. And I know that they're going to be presenting that, uh, those results to us in a short period of time.
Yep, that's correct. I think generally when we look at utilities broadly, and when I say utilities, I mean water, gas, electric. I think Climat Tech included and just usage and as we look at operating, um, efficiencies that we might gain from that. And just looking at how we operate in general, we, we may see some savings throughout the budget year this year. From PG&E specifically and maybe a few other, um, operating changes. But yeah, the bulk of all of that will really be hitting us in 24, 25, which is great. Because I think it's a, it's a driver to help our cost effectiveness moving forward. But, um, we'll see very little of it, as you mentioned, from PG&E this year. But the bulk of everything will start to happen is we've got to roll in the next fiscal year.
And but rebates, uh, we hope.
That'll be helpful.
Sooner than.
Yeah, that hopefully, yeah, yeah. Assuming they get everything done, they said they would, we would be looking good.
Yes.
Yep.
And the other thing, um, that I just wanted to point out too. So we're, we're balancing the street lighting fund. And again, uh, again, just for the benefit, PG&E owns some of the street light poles. The city does owns the balance. We have a spreadsheet for anybody who wants to, to see that. But we're balancing the street lighting fund and the stormwater assessment on gas tax. Is that correct?
Yeah, I'll, I'll let Natish when he talks about other funds kind of go deeper into that if needed. But yeah, I mean, essentially, we have a variety of other small and mid-sized funds, I'll call it, relative to the general fund. That are going to be in need of some conversation down the line sooner than later as well. We've talked about it a little bit, um, with the Grove Board itself, that's one. The LMD is another, I think the stormwater is another, I think the street lighting is another. The general fund can't sustain this, gas tax can't sustain this for a long period of time. So at some point, we either need to talk about, you know, reassessment, service delivery changes. You know, I think council member, you, you're hitting on a very important topic. Separate and distinct from the general fund that we need to talk about and make the community aware of as well. I think for a while, I think it's just happened. And I think we've reached a point where it's just happening is no longer a long-term reality. And we need to have real conversations about all of those funds.
And also that the stormwater fund has no annual increases. So, um, it is what it is. And then just to point out on the GAD also, we're, um, waiting for our city engineer to come back to us with our, um, immediate priorities. But that, um, we're going to do, see what those are. And then, um, decide what is the most important things to do in that district.
Uh, yeah, and, and/or should we move down in that direction or have a bigger conversation with that district? About an actual reassessment conversation before we actually throw money into doing anything. I think that the GAD board will have to really have that dialogue. Because, uh, creating a plan without the money may be more advantageous to just try to have that money go towards a, a, a conversation and a reassessment vote. To improve the financial stability. As you see in some of our CFDs and others, there, there is reserves and ability to do work. And I think that would be the ultimate outcome. And I think that's, I think that's the line the GAD board needs to have the conversation with the city engineer about. Is it even worth fully prioritizing these or, or is actually the assessment the, the, the direction we need to take?
And thank you. And, um, the last thing that, um, again, we had a very lengthy conversation. I had pages of notes this morning, but luckily, um, you answered a lot of my questions. The other thing I just wanted to point out is that our new city manager Brett is going to be taking on the project of. Cause I know this comes up a lot, um, the city's contract services, our vendor contracts, our consulting contracts. For his benefit and for the entire city, just to assess, um, who we're on contract with. And that there's no duplicity in contracts and services. So if, I don't know if you want to speak to that just a little bit.
Yeah, so I think it's, it'll be important to work with the department heads to understand, you know, broadly speaking, what, what vendors we're using. How do we look at our purchasing policy that I talked about a little bit earlier? How do they all connect? Are we using bidding in a timely manner to make sure we're most efficiently getting pricing? Is there cooperative agreements that we could use to have benefit us? The answer to all that may be everything's fine. You know, I'm not going to say that it's not, but we're going to, we're going to look at that over time. And provide some level of, I think, an operating benefit instead of just providing a, a list to the community, which I think has no context around it. I'm going to get a sense, um, of just where we're at with it and, and it, what if any changes can be made? Or, you know, are we generally doing what we need to do? And this is where we're at. I'll be able to report back to council. Again, that's going to be, you know, I think later in the fall, wintertime. But, but I think it would give me a good sense of the operation and will give council, I think, some security that it's been reviewed. And if there's anything that needs to be reported out as far as how we're going to change or structure, you know, I would let everybody know at that time.
And my very last thing is a question for you Brett. So what is, um, going to be our recruitment process for a new finance director? I know this isn't about staffing right now, but I know this topic obviously keeps coming up today. If you can give us kind of a sense of.
Yeah, no, it's a good question. So a couple of things can happen. So one, assuming June 6th goes wonderful and you guys approve the, the salary recommendations that I'm going to put forward. I think we can do it two ways. You know, it's a, it's a position that I, I'm allowed to appoint. And so the question for me is going to be, do I have anyone that I think is so skilled and ready? Within my network that it would be great to be here and be a part of the team quickly and get rolling. Versus the benefit of doing a, a recruitment and seeing what is out there. I will tell you, and Natish and I had this conversation just before we walked in. It is a difficult industry in a good way. So if you're a city that pays top dollar, you're having a hard time finding finance directors in the government world. Let alone a city that just isn't quite there or doesn't have the, the level to require all of that. And so my fear, um, and I've talked to some recruiters as well, just to get a sense of their gut. Is that the industry is very strained right now. And so I'm still weighing the benefit of a full, open recruitment and all the time that that takes and delays and gaps. And our continuity as an executive team versus is my network broad enough to find and tap people that I think could be great for the organization? And so I haven't made a decision on that yet. I continue to evaluate which will put the city and our executive team in the best position moving forward. But it is a difficult challenge in best case scenario. Probably a little bit more difficult even here in Clayton, although I feel like I'm wonderful to work with. But I don't know how much wonderful dollars I can, um, equate to people coming here. But, but I, but I think, um, I'm going to make that decision soon. So I would say by, um, mid-June, we're either going out or I'm going to have a few people that I can bring in to have conversations with about the role.
Thank you for that update, appreciate it.
All right, I just have a, I just have a couple more. Back to some of the key funds, I'm going to go in order of the staff report here. For the LMD, I think we're showing, so this, in the staff report, it says, uh, deficit 260. But then there's a bunch of, um. Uh, comments about changes. And at the end, it says it actually reflects a deficit of 388,000. Is that the accurate number? For LMD?
So if you read the very, um, very, under this number three, page nine of 12. You'll see that revised budget will net deficit, the deficit will be offset by fund balance carryover of 393, resulting in a net fund balance of 4568.
Yeah, but in terms of deficit though, are we, are we saying 388 is the deficit?
Yes.
Okay. So my question then is, that's a really big number. That's not a question. So what happened in this budget that the cost has gone up? When I look at FY22 actual at 1.6 million, current year, or sorry, not current year, FY24 budget at 1.9 million. You know, I, I understand that the cost for everything's going up, but that's 300,000. What, what's the more significant things that are driving the increase year over year?
Yes, um, if you remember, um, one of the things I did mention, the, um, this fund has been in a deficit spending for even the, the budget that was approved for 22, 23. Looking at the, uh, the fund balance, uh, the report itself, the, um, the budget for 22, 23 was 1.8 million in expenditures. The revised budget is 1.6 million, which is very close to the actual for 22.
Yeah, but part of that I think was some projects that were built up over time. And so they elected to actually execute those projects. So that was like, that was a known decision to be made. But on an ongoing basis, I don't think we have large projects in here, so.
So 2020.
I'm not sure.
We did pull the Carden A Trail.
Yes.
Uh, repair at, which was estimated to be around 500,000, so that's not in there, correct?
No, it's not in there. So fiscal year 22, we, we actual expenditures was 1.62 million. The 24 budget is based on what we actually spent in 22, which is 1.6 million, very close to it. If you look at the line items, uh, by line item, not much changes have been happening. The big change was, um, happened in the, um, uh, in the trails, fixture repairs in 22, you spend $0. But in 24, we are budgeting $75,000.
Okay. I guess, you know, this is an area that, you know, we have a specific funding source for. A certain set of activities. And if the funding source isn't efficient, I mean, I, I'm not sure it makes sense to budget at a deficit here. But, um, I guess this is part of the thing that we're going to be assessing over time.
Yes, this is definitely, um, we connected with the city manager, I, even today, so I'll turn it over to city manager.
Yeah, I think this is, this is some of the struggle that I continue to see, you know, granted it's now on day 11, but, but.
You're a veteran?
Yeah, I'm, I'm war torn and ready to roll. But what I, what I'm noticing is that, uh, as Natish mentioned, we, we kind of have structurally overspent these funds to get a lot of stuff done. I'm sure that was meaningful and great. But we, I don't think we're having the community conversation that that's not sustainable. And so as we come to what will need to be a vote anyways in '26 at the latest, but hopefully slightly sooner than that. For this, um, funding source, I think it's incumbent upon the council to talk about. Are we going out again with a specific tax related to trails? Or do we want to look at this current piece of the parcel tax in a broader way related to trails and other things the city might need more holistically? And put a number on that. I think that's, um, where I'm trying to look towards the fall and really have this big, broad strategic conversation. I think this is one of the points is like, how are we going to look at this and GAD and all these other things that we need to tackle? What's the policy direction? Do we want to actually go out and make it bigger in the sense of the revenue need? Do we want to reduce service cuts to the community? What is the, you know, that's the decision point mayor. And I think we're quickly coming to that because if we want to try anything in November 24, we need a runway of at least six months, but probably closer to 10. For us to actually be able to have information throughout the community, town halls, get it to the ballot correctly in June, um, for November. And so, um, yeah, I think that, that day is quickly approaching in the fall for us to have this dialogue about this and other related funds that have dedicated funding sources.
Okay. This kind, the same question kind of also applies to the Grove. The number is smaller. But we have the same, same scenario, right? And so, you know, I know that we, for the time spent working on these things, you know, we allocate salaries. And it, it seems like. The, the decision point is whether or not we reduce the level of service over time. But I would like to see what that looks like. Because here, when we, when we separate things by fund, it's difficult to assess the volume of staff time that is dedicated to it. Whereas, you know, what I, what I think would be a clearer presentation is like X% of maintenance is spent doing LMD work. And if we don't have that funding, that needs to go away. Something, something that real, that gives context to where the lever is in terms of a reduction in services. It's hard to see here, but I think that would, that would make, uh, that would add clarity to what we're actually talking about.
And I think that's a good, um, descriptor of maybe how the, that fall conversation can happen. I think what also has to be talked about at the same time is if we don't do it. What does that mean to the areas that were typically maintained, right?
Yes, that's part of it, right? And you say like, well, here's the choice.
Right, and, and it, does it create an increased risk of X or Y? Or is it just ugly or, you know, I mean, there's, there's real risk and then there's just, we don't like the way it looks, right? And that's, that's the difference we've got to distinguish in the conversation as well. As some things create actual risk, um, that we need to go, well, that hundred grand is probably going to be 15 times that if an event happens. Versus, we just don't really like the weeds, right? And, and, and they're, both are important conversations to have. But one has a higher calculated risk conversation than the other would. And yes, I think both should happen at the same time in that fall conversation. Along with, I think, a little bit of the general fund discussion as well is like, hey, this structurally looks X, Y, and Z. What do we think should be the future of this as well in a variety of areas?
Okay, and the last two items I had very quickly, you know, we, we have a line item here for merchant fees. Is, is that, I don't know what that is. It is, sorry.
So it's our credit card vendors charging us?
We are paying credit card vendors for.
So if somebody's using credit card, there's a merchant fee.
We pay it?
We pay, we pay for it, but if you remember the book of fees.
We're not going to pay that anymore, right?
Yes, in the book of fees.
So that should be zero?
If the fees are approved, then absolutely.
So yeah, that's, that's the, we don't want to make an assumption or presumption that council's going to approve everything. So we're assuming.
So we've been subsidizing the credit card fees?
Oh yeah, that's, yeah, and that's.
So let's not do that anymore?
That's, yeah, and, and I'll tell you, it's, it's not uncommon, but shouldn't happen. So, you know, good, good for us looking at it and moving in a different direction, yeah.
Okay, good.
Can I just go back to the Grove for one second? And Dana, please remind me, what was the amount of the grant that we received for the Grove? Was it 175 or 250? 250, so out of that 250,000, um, are we saying that the grant fund, is it the 23,000? Is that all that's left? Am I reading that correctly? Or what's left of that, uh, 250,000 dollars and is that shown here?
So I'll look to Natish, but we may not have this answer with the finance director departing, I have to look at it. I'm unsure if that sits in that fund or if it sits in the grant fund. And, and that's a struggle I had looking at it.
I think it's in the grant fund.
That's my thought too. But, but I need to work with Natish and team on a deeper dive of what the grant fund even has in it. Cause that structure is very broad and collective of a variety of grant things that I don't like.
It is in the grant fund and I think it's one time, so it wouldn't really, it wouldn't really here be on the operating side of it, but.
Well, but it might be sitting in the fund balance of that grant fund. And that's what I need to, I need to know if that grant fund is, if there's $300,000 and fund balance is 180, that, you know, grant. I think it's Prop 68 grant, but, or is it not, or, you know.
Would there, again, would there be any benefit to showing the fund balance of that grant in?
I, I don't think for the sake of operating conversation, as the mayor said, it, apples to apples, it's easier to sow what, what we're doing. But what it can do, and I think, I think a good portion, 185,000 of some Prop 68 funds went to the CCP that just got reopened. Um, and so what we need to do is understand what's left on that grant. And so what we need to do is understand what's left on that grant. There are some things that the chief would love to do, that I want to put forward relative to cameras and security out there that I think is very vital. It's about 15 to 20 grand, high-end. I'm going way high for the chief in case he wants to do something fancy out there. But it'd be beneficial, because it allows us to really have a view of that area and not be much more proactive, as we've talked about, of what's going on in the sense of, does the camera even work? And not waiting until an incident. And so that's where I'd want to understand, A, what's left in the grant funds, and then B, I would use them for one-time benefits like that, instead of the operating side, to try to balance it and give the community a little more sense of what we need to do from the operating side to deal with the future issues.
And are there restrictions on that grant, too, as to what you can use it for, or?
I'd have to look in. I, if anyone knows in the team, let me know. I think it has to be new equipment and not maintenance, but I may have that backwards.
I think that's accurate.
Thank you.
I get a gold star for three weeks in knowing that.
And we could use it for matching and other stuff. So, okay, cool. I think that is all of the questions I had. Did you?
Nope, I think most of my questions have been either answered this morning or today, and I want you to share some of those responses with our audience.
Okay, so my last ask is that if, for the, for all the general fund, we separate the various line items by cost center, by fund, or not by fund, I don't even know what our dimensionality is called, but we, for like, community development.
You're talking about by department?
Can we, can I get a file in Excel that has a roll-up, or I can do the roll-up, to see it all together? Because it makes it a lot easier to look at. So just the grand summary is, would be helpful for me.
So Natish, are you clear of what he wants, or do you need more description?
Just whatever files here in Excel that is the most current.
Oh, I see. Because you get a PDF. I apologize. Okay, now I understand what you're saying, yeah.
I can send it to you. Yes, absolutely. It's all together.
That's fine. So I think public comment is what we need to do.
Mayor, one, I do not have any speaker cards, and I do not have any hands raised on Zoom.
I'm giving it like a little bit extra time, because we went to that really quick, so I want to make sure someone has a chance. Okay, so then I will, I will close public comment. And then I think, is there additional direction that you need?
No, I think, you know, this is a great effort. I think staff, you know, has done a good job. I think what you'll see in the future is that we continue to refine this, continue to make the budget process internally even more collaborative and easier, frankly, to get through. And I think, you know, this is a good start, that the city, you know, is in need of conversations about where we're at, but we are not, we're not in a crisis. The sky is not falling, but I'm going to tell everyone to start grabbing umbrellas, right? And so we're in that moment, which is great, because we can plan and have discussions about everything we talked about today. Service delivery levels, whether we want more money to do stuff, what does that mean? What are we doing to help efficiencies? And I think, you know, all of that is where we're headed. This is really to hold us to have those conversations in the fall. And that won't be the only time maybe we have them, but it really, we have a decision point in November, one way or the other, with a variety of things that we need to do, November '24. And so the fall of this year really begins the conversation of what's that direction from council? And so to the community that might listen to this later, I think the next, you know, three months, as we get into that September, October time, will be a big time where we'll have one or two big council meetings where they're going to last a long time, and we're going to have a lot of discussion. So just prepare our community for that conversation.
Excellent.
And I do just have one more question. In light of our finance director vacancy and Natish staying on another at-least month, do we need to extend that Gov Invest contract, or?
Actually, I'll work with the city manager, because through, we're trying to maybe give a reduced contract amount, something that we can manage internally, some of the work internally. So we'll work with the city manager, and that, he was actually very forthcoming today, too, so.
Thank you.
Sounds good. All right. And with that, I think we are concluded. I will close the meeting. It's 5:45.